Please call order to December fourteenth meeting of the Border Town Area School District's School Board. Do we have any roll call?
Yes, Mr. Brophy. Mrs. Dieroff?
Here.
Mr. Hemingway?
Here.
Here.
Mrs. Hogan?
Present.
Ms. Lord? Ms. Nyman?
Here.
Mr. Panarela?
Here.
Mr. Updegrove?
Here.
Mr. Zawada?
Here.
Mr. Brophy?
Here.
I would like to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and for a moment of silence, I would ask you to please include in your moment of silence, we've lost a couple people from our Quibley family. I hope you would put them in your moment of silence. Quibley's been with us for a long time and it's like losing some family members when this happens. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America and to its citizens, one nation, under God, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
Okay, to move forward, there are no previous executive sessions to discuss or to give any information from. Public comment period number one. I'd like to know if anybody has signed up for that?
No.
No? So, next, I would like to see if there's approval of any meeting minutes. We take a, you can take a call on that. Any minutes to approve?
We would ask for you to approve approval of the November twenty-third, 2021 Board of School Directors' Meeting Minutes.
Okay. Dieroff, please.
Hogan, seconds.
Okay, we have a roll call then?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
I'm going abstaining for the same reason I abstained that night.
Can you repeat that reason, please?
Because, in my eyes, that was an illegal Zoom meeting and I am not going to be a part of that.
Thank you. Mr. Panarela?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Next, moving on, we have the Student Representative Report.
I would like, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Welcome Sandra Drakis and Olivia Brodowski. I hope I got those, I hope I said those names right. First time I had the chance to say them. So if you could come forward and make the student report?
Yeah.
And, and can you two like repeat your names so I get it right next time?
Hello, I'm Olivia Brodowski and hello, everyone. I hope everyone enjoyed their Thanksgiving break with friends and family. Sarah and I are very excited to officially announce our Student Board Representative page on the district website and excited, and exciting events happening in the high school.
And then I'm Sarah Drakis and to begin, Student Council is hosting their snowball dance on Friday, December seventeenth at Bortown Area Senior High and Wish Week will occur that following week. During Wish Week, Live Day will be held, which is an event hosted by TV News during the half day before holiday break. Also, we would like to take a second to honor all the athletes awarded the title of All Pack First Team, All Pack Second Team, and Passau Mercury Athletes. Congratulations.
Moving forward, we would like to take some time to introduce the Student Board Representative webpage. This webpage can be found on the district homepage under School Board.
So on the first page that showed here, you can find a short bio of Olivia and me explaining our positions, our personal involvement with the community, goals of our position, and contact information under representative biographies and more.
The next page on the web, on the webpage titled Student Board Reports includes our reports from two months ago on the left, previous month's reports in the middle, and current reports on the right.
And then if you just go to the Student Leader Luncheon tab, at the top, there's a brief description explaining what Student Leader Luncheons are. As you scroll down, there is also an active link connected to a form in which students can sign up to be in the next Student Leader Luncheon and a copy of the previous Student Leader Luncheon discussion questions. We are hoping to organize more of these luncheons moving forward.
And the final page titled I Want to Become a Student Board Rep includes duties and qualifications for this position. As the year continues, we will post the application to elect the next Junior Board Representative.
And then that's everything we have. So thank you so much for your time and taking a look at the webpage with us. The link to the webpage will permanently be found and bears repeating if you'd ever like to take a look. And I hope everyone enjoys their upcoming holiday and we look forward to seeing you in the new year.
And also, I want to thank the two of you. This is a great initiative. It's a, it's a, you know, it shows here in Bortown, we're, we're a thinking, moving community and I thank you two for that. That's a great, that's a great, great thing you bring up.
Thank you.
Thanks, great. Great. Okay. And next is the President's Report. Excuse me, next is the President's Report. I'm first going to start out with a little bit different than what we've had. The big issue in the district has been masking, unmasking. On Friday, the governor, the rule was struck down of mandatory masks. When that happened, we here at Bortown reverted back to our original stealth, excuse me, our original health and safety plan, which was in effect prior to the mandate. So that is what we've been governing by since. Now, in that plan, which was introduced, accepted before, before the mandate, there, it does have a mask optional portion to that, to that plan. However, also in that plan, there are guidelines and guidance as to when you go to mask optional versus keeping masks on. Presently, by that plan, we are in a mask on situation due to the amount of cases per hundred thousand. We're well, well above where we were even last year. So at this point, we are moving forward with that plan and will stay with that presently. Now, in addition, the plan gets revised and looked at every six months. The administration is presently in going to be doing that and revising the plan based on several things. There's new information things out there. There are new guidance out there. There are things like vaccines that have been placed in. They will have an effect on the revision of the plan. That plan will be presented in the January eleventh meeting for the board to accept or reject. We will do that at that time. In the meantime, we will stay masked as per our present plan, which we are following as we are required to do. I want to point out one thing. In the past, we have moved safely and cautiously around holidays. We've done it every year. We even asked one point in time, we went virtual for a pollution. So it's to keep the kids safe and eventually get back into school. The, we're doing the same thing here. Due to, we know, people are going to go visit everybody. They're going to do it. People are going to be in groups and gatherings. They're going to do it. And we, and we actually encourage that. I think it's, you know, people should see each other, should see their family. However, we want to keep the schools open. So through the holidays, we will continue to be masked. First week of January, you'll notice that the meeting is the eleventh. That's ten days after January first, which is a recommended number to follow. So we're following that number. So we're not doing anything different than we did in previous years around the holiday seasons. The, when we do the, the meeting on the eleventh, we may still not come out of masks. It's going to depend on, on what's happening in the area. So we're not going to make any promises to that, but we will be following guidance, which is most up to date and, and the most fair to move forward.
Could you elaborate on what's going on in the area? Like the numbers and stuff, making decisions?
I, I don't have the numbers, but I think it's like several hundred for a hundred thousand.
Is that in Philadelphia or just?
That's, that's Berks and Montgomery. Every single one of the counties in Pennsylvania are presently in high.
So the masks aren't working?
That's, that's, that's nothing, that's nothing I can comment on. I can only tell you what the laws are. So, no, I'm done. I'm sorry, I'm done. Enough, I'm done.
Enough? I spent hundreds of thousands of dollars moving into this district and you said you weren't going to do this.
I'm done.
My kids are crying, they don't want the mask on and you're telling me we have all these infections with the masks on. So the masks aren't working. So let's keep on indefinitely and then what are we going to say when they come down? What's, what's the, what's the goal? When, why can they come down? With zero infection? You know, deers carry COVID. So are we going to go and check the deers now? I heard the deer population very high with COVID.
You're going to allow me to continue or are you going to keep talking?
I pointed some numbers, hard numbers, not your feelings or your.
It's not my feelings. There are hard numbers. Go look them up.
So what, what is it that causes the masks? If you don't have the numbers, you didn't.
Okay. I'm moving on.
Yeah, but you can present the numbers.
I'm moving on.
You're going to have to accept something, give us a.
I, I am moving on.
Well, that's great, I'm not.
Okay.
I want to continue discussion, so does everybody else.
So, we're not continuing, I'm moving on.
Answer. Answer. Answer.
Order, or I will adjourn the meeting.
That doesn't mean anything.
They will adjourn the meeting. Would you like me to adjourn the meeting?
You don't have attorneys, you're going to, that, that camel means nothing.
Okay.
That camel means nothing.
Okay. You, if you're going to continue, we're taking a recess. Your choice.
So you have to present the numbers?
No.
There you go. That's really a trying day later. Okay, I just want to make sure.
Okay, you're quite welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Nyman?
I have questions on how we're recording these. I mean, I'm hearing different stories. Some people are, are.
Okay.
Are we, are we discussing this now, Jim, or are we just having a report?
No, I'm done discussing at this point. I'm going to continue on with what we have on here. I'm not about to debate what I just said.
I'm not debating you. I, I have concerns and I want to know how we're recording these.
So that's not a question for I am at this point in time in this board meeting.
So even as a board member, I can't get answers.
You can get answers, but I'm moving.
You brought up the subject, yeah.
I brought up the subjects as an, as an informational subject, not as a debate issue. You're turning it into a debate issue, I'm sorry.
I mean, you had the armed guards on your side, we saw that was like so awesome.
Jim, Jim, I'm getting aggravated now. Can you continue with your thing or are we going to take a recess?
We're moving on. Yeah. We're moving on. Okay, now the next issue, the next, next issue here is a sad one, one I don't want to, I hope they didn't have to go with. I have to, I have to put a motion out there to accept the resignation of Kirsten Lord as she decided to resign her seat. So, I'd like to have a motion to accept the resignation for Kirsten Lord, School Board Director effective December fourteenth, 2021. Could I have that motion? Do I have a second?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Did she get bullied out?
Per, per board policy of 'oh four, the board has thirty days to fill the board vacancy. This vacancy will be advertised and the board's secretary will be accepting nominations for the position through January fourth. The board will be appointing Mrs. Lord's successor at the January eleventh, 2022 meeting.
That's not thirty days.
It's just, it's about, it's close to thirty days, it's from the fourteenth to eleven. We have to, we definitely do within the thirty days. Yes, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Brophy. Just a quick question, you, I just may have missed it. Does that person have to live in Region One?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. At this point, we can move on?
Take it, roll call to accept the resignation.
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call to accept the resignation?
Motion to accept the resignation of Kirsten Lord, Region One. First by Mr. Hemingway, second by Ms. Dieroff. Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
No.
Ms. Lord? I'm sorry, Ms. Hogan. I'm sorry, I'm looking right at you.
It's okay, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Panarela?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, at this, at this point, I'd like to name those that have been appointed to different committees and put the committee, most committees down. There'll be one, one position that will be going over later in a motion, but at this point in time, I'd like to announce, right now as it stands, VCTC, Mr. Roger Updegrove, whose term expires June 2023. The VCTC alternate, Ms. Christine Nyman, whose term expires June 2023. Finance Committee, I will continue to hold that. Facilities, Mrs. Ruth Dieroff, I'll continue to hold that. Policy, Mr. Brian Hemingway, will continue to hold that. As it says, it says, it's AD Hop Committee, which will examine. That will be Mr. Zawada and Mr. Tony Panarela, have agreed to serve on that. Mr. Panarela will also serve as Student Body Representative and I thank you for that also. It's a very important, it's going to be an important committee for a subcommittee here. So thank you very much. With that, I will turn it over to Superintendent for the Superintendent's itemized report.
There's not a secretary's report tonight. Is there a solicitor's report?
There is no solic.
Okay. And there is not a, under the consent agenda, there is not anything on the consent agenda. So we're going to move right to the Superintendent's Report under itemized. And the first item would be to the Board of School Directors to approve the personnel agenda item as presented.
Hogan motions.
Roll call. And any discussion on personnel? Okay, with that, roll call. Thank you.
I have a first by Ms. Hogan, a second by Mr. Updegrove to approve the personnel agenda.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Panarela?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next, I have the approval of Ms. Denise Ernst as Board Treasurer, looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the appointment of Ms. Denise Ernst to the position of Board Treasurer for the 2020, 21, 2021, 2022 fiscal year at an prorated annual stipend of $1,200.
Hogan moves.
Is there any discussion on this, this topic? Okay, with that, we go with roll call.
Yes. Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Panarela?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next, we have the Bortown Alternate Delegate to the Berks County Tax Collection Committee, Executive Committee. I am looking for the Board of School Directors to, I'm sorry, a motion for the Bortown Area School District to adopt the Alternative Delegate to Berks County Tax Collection Committee and Executive Committee.
Hogan motions.
Dieroff, seconds.
Again, any discussion on this before we move forward? Okay, roll call vote.
I have a first by Ms. Hogan, a second by Ms. Dieroff. Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Panarela?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next one is for you, Mr. Brophy.
Okay. At this point, we, we're, we're going to recommend someone for the DCIU Representative Appointment to finish up the unexpired term. I'm recommending Mrs. Hogan for that position. So I would like to see, I guess, I guess at this point, I'd like to have a motion to accept that, have a second, and then take a, a roll call vote.
I'll motion.
Okay. Any, any discussion anybody wants to have on this? Okay, roll call vote, please.
I have a first by Mr. Hemingway and a second by Mr. Updegrove. Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
That's wrong.
I'm sorry.
Was it Tony? Was it Mr. Panarela?
No. No, I made the motion and I'm Ms. Hogan's second.
Okay.
I have a first by Mr. Hemingway to repeat and a second by Mr. Updegrove. Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
No.
Mr. Panarela?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, congratulations, Mr. Dier.
And next, we have that the Board of School Directors approve the agreement to contribute to the traffic improvements at the intersection of Montgomery Avenue, North Reading Avenue, and Henry Avenue as presented. This agreement has been reviewed by our solicitor.
Hogan motions.
Dieroff, seconds.
Okay, any discussion? Would anybody like to discuss the contract?
Is this, is the max, is the, the school board or the school district being responsible for is the $200,000?
$100,000.
No, no, $100,000, Mr. Zaw.
$100,000, sorry about that. So that's our max exposure, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just had a, a quick comment. I just, no, it's okay.
I'm going to vote for it, but to know that I was against it because of the fact I think we should have met Cobradale a little bit more than what we did, but I will support it because they need their money too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brophy. Yeah, I just wanted to, to mention that, and I did read it in there, but it's, it's up to $100,000 after they have, after they have spent all of their grant money.
Yeah, that is correct.
Right, so.
It's our total.
Up to, right. Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
I would say that when we said up to $100,000, you might as well conclude $100,000. Okay, can we move to a roll call vote on that, please? Roger, do you have something? Sorry. Okay, move to a roll call.
Okay, I have a first by Ms. Hogan, a second by Ms. Dieroff to approve the agreement to contribute to the traffic improvements at the intersection of Montgomery Avenue, North Reading Avenue, and Henry Avenue as presented. Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Panarela?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, I'd like to thank everybody for that. This has been an open, an open issue since around 2014. I'm glad we're finally bringing it to a close and we can move forward from this. Thank you.
That completes my report, Mr. Brophy.
Okay. So, all right, with that, we move to public comment period number two. Do we have anyone signed up for public's period comment number two?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
I'm going to use my clothes. So.
We do have somebody, so you'll read them.
So, on behalf of the School Board Directors, I'd like to welcome you to this meeting. We welcome your attendance and influence from stakeholders to assist us in making recommendations and decisions relating to the Bortown Area School District. The procedural rules and public participation are detailed in Policy Board Number Six. The document is available at this meeting on the SAD website. Participants privately registered on the sign up sheet will be recognized by the presiding officer. Public comment period number two is for those persons wishing to discuss an item not appearing on the agenda. Participants must preface their comments by announcement of their name, address, and group affiliation if this is appropriate. All statements, inquiries, or comments shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually, administrative team members individually, school employees, or members of the public individually. Note that we value and will not compromise the privacy of our students and staff. Please see us outside the realm of a public meeting if you have a concern about an individual staff member or student. If your public comment concludes a question, Mrs. Torsha or a member of her staff will be in contact with you to confirm your question or provide you with information. Comments are limited to three minutes and, and comment period is limited to thirty minutes. Finally, note that we do record our board website, our board committee meetings, and we post them on YouTube with a link to our website. We request if you do wish to take pictures or record the meeting yourself, please do so in a non-destructive and discreet manner and use those materials respectfully and responsibly. Thank you. Erin Maximilian? Is that it? Okay, okay, could you please state your name and your residence?
My name is Erin Maximilian and I am a resident of Douglas Township, Montgomery County. First, I'd like to say congratulations to our newest board members. I'm looking forward to the positive change that I know you will bring to this district. I'm very hopeful that one of those changes is allowing choice when it comes to masking. There will never be a perfect time to lift the masking requirement for our staff and students. There will always be another variant or another virus. The winter months will always have a higher rate of colds and flu and other illnesses, but it's time to rip off the Band-Aid. When my daughter was a young child, she had an irrational fear of Band-Aids. Sometimes she would end up with a Band-Aid on her knee for two weeks because she was afraid to take it off. On one occasion, I distinctly remember grabbing that dirty Band-Aid when she wasn't looking and yanking it off. She screamed her head off for a good minute or so until she looked down and realized that it was okay. It didn't hurt anymore and her boo-boo had healed. She never would have taken off the Band-Aid on her own. Someone needed to make that decision for her so that she could see it would all be okay. Just like ripping off the Band-Aid, making masks optional for students and staff may certainly make some folks resistant and uncomfortable at first. Students and staff are still more than welcome to continue wearing masks. Students and staff are still more than welcome to continue wearing masks. No one is going to tell you that you can't. Please, by all means, do what makes you feel safe and comfortable, and please allow everyone else to do the same. Many are vaccinated, possibly boosted, and will continue to mask up without being required to do so, and that is their right, and it is our right as parents to make that medical choice for our children. Please do not make our children wear your fear on their faces. At the last board meeting, one board member said that while he was not a fan of masks initially, that keeping the children masked was actually keeping the children in school. This was while our high school students were virtual. I'm sure that was simply an oversight, but clearly masks are not playing any part in keeping our children in school. It's time for choice. In a neighboring district where I teach, the school board voted last night to make masks optional as of January third. This is a district that required masks for all of last year and this year. Masking for all was in their health and safety plan from the start, but they were able to modify and amend that in one board meeting last night. You all have some tough decisions to make and will never make everyone happy all of the time, but it's time to rip off the Band-Aid and make masks optional for all. Please do not make a universal medical choice for all children. Every child is unique and should be treated as such. Leave those medical choices up to each individual family. I look forward to your discussions on this matter, and I pray that one of you will make the motion tonight to go mask optional as of January third or at the very latest, January eleventh. Thank you.
Okay, John Dobbs, please.
How are you doing? My name is John Dobbs. I'm a resident of Montgomery County. I have four children in the district and just spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to have the privilege of going, having my children go to this district. When we moved into the district, we were told there would not be masking forced. They would be optional because there was no science behind it. Ms. Torshia was one of those people. The principals were those people. And now I have kids, my kids want to take the masks off, but they're afraid because the teachers and the staff are gonna get very nasty. And I told my son, it's easy, you gotta be brave. Well, when my mask went below my nose tonight, a geriatric police officer and his buddy came in here and they wanted to forcibly remove me. So now I look at my kids and say, you know what, you're probably right. They probably are gonna overreact. And then the man with the gun says, anytime you wanna go, let's go. So usually you get put in those positions because you don't react well in public and they kinda stick you some way so you don't cause any problems. Most of the people in law enforcement know that. Case in point. Now, that being said, there is no basis for having masks. You guys do not have the right to do that. Reviewed all the codes, met with the attorneys, and rather than donate my money to the school and help out, the next move is going to be instead of fearing someone like Hogan over here, who is obviously for masks and probably threatened to say they'll make lawsuits if there is no, if there is no mask policy, we have the law on our side saying you do not have the right to masks. Now, if you guys pursue, if you guys choose to pursue, if the school board continues to pursue a mask policy that is forcing our children to not allow them to have face contact in school, to restrict their airflow, to not get them to school on time or feed them properly, not grade them properly, but make sure those masks are on, my kids are in counseling, there is a detriment to the health, and you guys will be held liable. We're trying not to go that route. We're trying to not do this litigiously. Like I said, we're here to help. But if the answer we're going to get is go scratch, we're making this choice for you, and that's all there is to it, the next move is to spend a massive amount of money and hurt you guys in the wallet and take the money away from the kids and hit your insurance policy and have them go up. Trust me, the last thing I wanna do, but I can definitely do it, and I have a bunch of people behind me, and it'll cost a lot, not you personally. And just on that note, in my last couple seconds, there is nothing that holds the school liable for virus transmission or exposure, so the fact of saying you're trying to cover yourself or protect yourselves doesn't make any sense. You can't be sued. You couldn't be sued for the epidemic or smallpox or measles or anything else.
Thirty seconds.
And now you're hiding behind that excuse to say, oh, we wanna protect ourselves. The only thing you have to fear monetarily is keep abusing the children, keep stopping them from getting an education, and keep segregating kids that wanna take their masks off, and there will be a very large lawsuit that will make headlines, and there will be a grounding that's gonna free all the other schools up from this. So I'm asking you to amend the mask policy immediately. That's it. You guys have the power, slap your gavel around and do what you do.
Time's up.
Okay, Melissa Ashland, please. Please state your name and residence, please.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Ashelman, and I'm a resident of Bechelsville. I stand before you again because my emails continue to go unanswered, as well as the questions I posed back in my speech at the August board meeting. One of the members always states that the rules and that the superintendent or a board member will email us if we have any questions and get back to us. What exactly is the timeframe for that? I have sent many emails with questions and concerns about actions, protocols, and the legality of what's going on and never got one response. Why is that? In the last meeting, it was stated that we come off rude, aggressive, or angry even. Honestly, after months and months of emails and begging to unmask our kids, how would you feel? How would you feel? It's something that you believed in with your heart and soul, and you were trying to work with the other side, and you were ignored. If your child suffered from asthma or another medical condition and masking exacerbated their issues as well as caused them mental anguish, would you not fight for them? I know some of you sitting up there just wish we would give up and go away already, but please know that we're not going to go away. We're not going to get quiet. We're not, we're going to continue to fight for our children. We are going to fight for the Constitution, the law, the, the choice, freedom for choice, all of the things that so many men and women have sacrificed for, for our country. New board members, welcome, congratulations. You came here at a really fun time. Who helped, please don't forget, though, who helped you get you into those seats? Who helped you at the polls? Who rallied for you during the election season? Who got your names out there? Who voted for you? Please remember what you promised us, what you promised to stand up for and do right by our children. Masks are not needed to keep them in schools. Masks cause more harm to their immune systems and are going to cause them to continue to get sick with all the bacteria, germ-infested, wet, disgusting claws across their mouths and noses all day. This is a virus. This virus is a cold, and it's not going to go away. We are only asking for a mask choice. If there are parents that choose to mask their kids, have at it. If you wanna vaccinate them, sure, go for it. That's your choice. These masks impose risks on our children every day, and where there is risk, there must be a choice. From dental issues to physical issues.
Thirty seconds.
And most definitely psychological and mental issues. And for months, you are toying with their emotions, and it's just two weeks. Oh, it's just a few more. Oh, it's just till December fourth. Oh, now it's just gonna be till January seventeenth. This is getting to be ridiculous and absurd, and where does it end? Over four hundred schools are mask optional across Pennsylvania, and a lot of them went optional as of yesterday. Perk Valley, Daniel Boone, Pen Ridge, Palisades, Council Rock, Nesho, many quicker.
Time's up. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Not rules we follow. We can't even let her finish.
Omi Strunk, please.
Mine was pulled, it's on the top. No, okay. Can you hear me?
Please, please state your name and residence, please.
My name is Omi Strunk, and I reside on Hoffmanville Road in Douglas, Montgomery County. I currently have three students in the district. Soon it's gonna be two because we're in the process of enrolling my middle school daughter from the BASC Virtual Academy, enrolling her in an outside public charter to try to fix the mess that she's become in these last twenty months. We were excited for our kids to return to in-person last year, but this only lasted a few weeks for her. Wearing a mask triggered her asthma, which led to daily coughing attacks. After her constant cough and the bullying she faced because of it, we pulled her from in-person learning. Between the isolation she faced at the beginning of the pandemic and the bullying she faced when she returned, she now suffers so much social anxiety that I don't know if she'll ever be an in-person student here again. The events of 2020 were traumatic for everyone, especially our children. We know this, when they suffer trauma, that normality is important for them, but the school experience is not normal. Good education, compassion, and pure socialization is being put on the back burner for COVID rules that only offer a false sense of safety. When you really break them down, they make zero sense and don't prevent a virus that is circulating everywhere. Churches, bowling alleys, arcades, movie theaters, indoor playgrounds, and restaurants are packed full of unmasked people, including our students. Families and children are attending gatherings and parties with the same kids they aren't allowed to be in close contact with at school. You say the current policies are keeping kids in school, but I personally know of a young student in our district that is being excluded from school right now for twenty days because of COVID contact. A young, healthy student with zero symptoms is sitting at home being made to believe they are a danger to their classmates. And by the way, if one of us parents kept our healthy kid home from school for twenty consecutive days, we'd probably be facing truancy charges. My senior was forced to walk all the way around the outside of the high school in forty-degree weather to get a mask on a day that she forgot hers because the guard at the door told her she had to go to the office to get one, but yet he denied her entry to do so. If these practices aren't degrading and lacking compassion, then I don't know what is. When my daughter's asthma was severe, we treated, we dreaded every flu season because we knew that any virus that came into our home could cause severe illness for her, but I would have never expected from others what's now being enforced just to go to school. We chose to protect our family with flu shots, but we didn't demand everybody else get them. I hope that parents had enough sense to keep their kids home from school if they were sick, but we never expected every person around her to wear a mask or stay at home for ten days to prove they weren't infected if they came in contact with a sick person. We accepted the risks she faced in order for her to attend school and have a social life. We practiced good hygiene.
Thirty seconds.
We made our own personal choices about where we went and what precautions we took for her. The bottom line is COVID and other viruses aren't going anywhere. There will never be a time that you will be able to guarantee no child will get sick from school or bring illness home to their families. This was never a goal, never possible, nor ever will be, and it's very arrogant to think otherwise, but it seems to be that's a guarantee that some people are suddenly waiting for. Our hands are tied. You wonder why people are choosing to go to outside charter schools, but it's because it's the only option that we have anymore. You as a board have that choice now.
Time expired. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Strunk.
Just make a vote right now. No one wants the damn masks. No one wants them.
You only called for order one time.
Well, what happens? The armed guards come in? Is that what happens?
Yeah.
Wow, that's, it's really nice to be in that seat, huh? You're gonna send the armed guards in if we're not quiet. It's unbelievable.
No, we can't go to an executive session, but I can call for a reset. We can only, in a tense, in a tense session. I'm gonna ask once for order. Do we have order? Okay, thank you. At this point, we want to move to, I believe, board member comments? I have no more public comments written and for listening people. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I missed that. Thank you. My mistake, I'm sorry, I apologize. Okay, Barb Furman, please.
Barb Furman, Garrett Lane in Gilbertsville. I would suggest that future meetings would always be at a larger venue that is more inviting for the public. New Hanover Township, I was at a meeting last week. It was four hours, mask optional and open discussion. We just saw firsthand what our children are being subjected to enforced masking and lack of debate and discussion. What are we teaching our children? I love my friends in education and the staff, but for the life of me, I have never seen adults take an at-best, marginally policy-driven mandate and using it to threaten students, staff, and public. I cannot, we cannot keep chasing numbers, and we're, we're not the pandemic police. There are real cons to forced masking. Lack of oxygen, lack of dignity, mental health. No businesses are forcing masking because they need to stay in business. Our children deserve better. Follow, follow the lead of our Berks County neighbors, Ole, Exeter, and Daniel Boone. Our freedom and liberty for families is at stake. In November, we voted overwhelmingly for mask optional parent choice. We are one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We need to follow that. I wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and I hope that we will get back to common sense now.
At this point, I'd like to move to board member comments, starting with Ms. Deroff and going around the room.
I just wanted to congratulate Ms. Harmon on her retirement. She spent many years in the district, working with his children in sports, and I hope she has a wonderful retirement.
Mrs. Nyman?
Okay. Pennsylvania is the birthplace of our Constitution, land of the free, home of the brave. Right now, we've gone every level through the courts on this mask mandate, and we're supposed to be free. So at this time, I'm gonna make a motion that, starting tomorrow, we go back to mask optional. Our children, our children can no longer continue this way. I see what it's doing to my own family. I've heard these people out here tonight. This is killing our children mentally, physically. We've gone the steps, and every time we got a ruling from the courts, we were told, oh, there's gonna be an appeal, there's gonna be an appeal, we gotta wait. Well, now they can't appeal any higher. So I am making a motion, and I'm hoping somebody's gonna second my motion because we need to do something. We need to go back to optional. Leave the parents make their decisions because it's not for us to make those decisions. Our decision should be education. We're here to give our children an education. They've gone two years, basically, without getting a good education. I'm sorry. I see what it's doing to my grandchildren, and I've had enough. So I'm looking for a second to my motion to go mask optional.
Hold it for, before that, before a second can be done, I'm going to remind you of Act sixty-five. Presently, you're trying to add something to the agenda that's not on there right now, and by Act sixty-five, that is, you have to have specific reasons to do that or you're being violated the sunshine law. I will read here what those issue, what those issues could be. First, if a potential emergency that involves a clear and present danger to life and property, to address a matter of agency business that only, only arose and was brought to the school's attention within twenty-four hours, to address a diminished matter which does not involve expenditure of funds, to direct the administration to research a matter, and the last one is majority of board members present at the meeting, they vote to add this item in deference to the sunshine law and, and, but to put it on the agenda. The board members must vote individually on this matter in order for this, for a motion to carry and be seconded. So at this point in time, I'm going to ask the board members to vote as to whether they want to add this to the agenda at this time or leave it on the agenda where it is in the future. So, yes.
I want to put it on the agenda as soon as possible, because we gotta have another meeting in twenty-four hours.
Okay, well, let me go around, so let's get the vote on the yes or no, whether it goes on the agenda.
Just as a matter of clarification, I want to say that you need to, a majority of the board will need to vote to. the board will need to vote to place this proposed modification to our Health and Safety Plan on the agenda, and you need to also assert the reason for the change to the agenda being made at this meeting because it was not placed on the already approved agenda. That's, this is not my requirement. This is the requirement under Act 65, which was passed on August, which was made effective on August 29, 2021.
Yeah, go ahead now.
I have a comment first.
Ms. Nyman, I'm going to call for order again. I'm getting tired of calling for order again.
I'm getting tired of coming here.
Well, that's okay.
I believe Act 65 was thrown out.
No, it was not.
It was not. It's the law, and it's being litigated, actually, in the Parkland School District right now. We're handling that litigation. It's the law.
Yes, Ms. Dieroff, Mr. Updegrove?
So in 24 hours, we can have another meeting and put this back on the agenda for that meeting?
24 or 48.
You need to get it posted in for a special meeting, 24 hours. I don't know if you can get it in, whether you can get it in the advertisement for the newspaper as of this point. I doubt that you'll be able to get it in for tomorrow. You could potentially get it in for Thursday.
Thank you, Mr. Birvey. I just have, I have a clarifying question. So Ms. Nyman's motion is to go mask optional. Is that correct? But we are mask optional.
Yes, you are. Our Health and Safety Plan says mask optional.
The first motion is to add something to the agenda.
Actually, the first motion right now is to add something to the agenda. That's where we are at this point.
Okay. I appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Nyman, back to you. You're stating the reason for adding it, and then it will go to a roll call vote.
Reason for adding it is the mental illness it's causing us people, causing the children. They're not even getting grades. I mean, the medical, what it's doing to their mental health, to their physical health, I think that's enough.
Mr. Saltanic, I need some clarification on reasons. Can you offer any guidance there?
I mean, that is the asserted reason. So the motion would be that to add the mask optional action to the agenda, and that the reason for the change to the agenda that's being made is because of the purported mental health and physical health of individuals who are subjected, I presume, to the current mask requirement. That's my synthesis of what Ms. Nyman just said.
Ms. Nyman?
That sounds good.
How does, how does this affect our Health and Safety Plan if we do this? I'm confused.
Effectively, it's going to bypass the Health and Safety Plan if we go to, if we go to remove masks. We'll be in violation of our Health and Safety Plan.
And isn't Health and Safety a federal requirement?
It has been, it has been a state requirement.
There's over 400 states that don't have any, any Health and Safety Plan whatsoever. Over 400.
All right, I'm going to go back to the motion on the floor. Roll call vote.
Is there a second?
All right, is there, don't we have to vote on it first to accept it?
I think you need to have a motion.
No, the motion, yeah, the motion, I think, from Ms. Nyman, I didn't hear a second. Was there a second in Ms. Nyman's motion as I synthesized it?
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Updegrove?
Okay, then now there would be a vote, and it would require a majority of the board members present to add this to the agenda for this evening. So that will require five affirmative votes, and that would require a roll call at this point. A vote of yep would add it to the agenda.
And that's for this evening?
That's for right now, yeah. Okay, I get, can we move to a roll call vote?
This is a roll call vote for the motion that was added to, from the floor.
Correct.
I have a first by Ms. Nyman, a second by Mr. Updegrove. Ms. Dieroff?
No.
Mr. Hemingway?
No.
Ms. Hogan?
No.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada? Mr. Burofy? Four, four. It is tied. The motion dies on the floor. Mr. Saltanic, can you confirm that?
That is confirmed. You need a majority, and obviously, four to four is not a majority.
So how do we, how do we proceed from there, Mr. Saltanic?
Let us take a vote.
It's not on the agenda.
Order, please.
Excuse me, I, it is not on the agenda.
Correct.
So the board, under the requirement, would be prohibited from taking action on the proposed agenda item.
Okay, thank you. So can we continue moving on to board comments? Yes, Ms. Nyman?
I still have questions and concerns because I'm hearing all over the thing that we are not treating everybody equal in the way we're quarantining them or whatever. So I want guidance on how we're doing this. I want to know, if a doctor says you have COVID, but your test comes back negative, what are we putting down for it? And I'm hearing a lot of that going on.
Ms. Nyman, do you have any specifics? And when you bring generals like that, I can't really comment.
That's a specific question. Answer it.
There is, what is a specific question?
If the doctor says you have COVID, but the test says you doesn't, can you pick up this hole?
I think that's a good question.
I don't have an answer for it.
I want to know how and who's making the decisions on whether or not a student has COVID, how we're quarantining them.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
One second. Mrs. Torsh, could you get back to Mrs. Nyman with an answer on that?
Yes.
Another question, please?
Yes, I will.
We will get back to you with an answer on that. I do not have that answer. I'm not going to make one up. So the administration will get back to you with an answer.
I mean, I definitely.
Order one more time.
Or what?
Or I'm going to shut it down.
You don't follow one rule. You got to follow that rule?
Yeah, I'm going to follow it.
Like a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Updegrove?
I'm done.
I guess I don't get a second.
You asked a question. We're giving you an answer. What else could you please? You are, you are running over the three minutes we give, but go ahead. One more question.
I mean, I don't think discussion after it's not my turn is warranted for my three The email that you sent out, Mary Beth, did you include the board members because I did not get a copy?
The, the message that went out with regard to the communication about continuing with masks?
Yes.
Yes, that was communicated to the board and the.
I did not get it.
And I will check and make sure that, for whatever reason, I can't answer that because we do send those out through Mrs. Moyer, so I will confirm that the board did receive that, but the board did receive the first one, and the first one was the same thing. It was just a follow-up on Sunday night as a reminder.
I did not receive a copy, so that's why I'm questioning.
Okay. My apologies on that, and we'll make sure that that's rectified.
Wishing everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, stay safe in your travels, and sorry, people, I tried.
Mr. Updegrove?
Getting back to the masks, I think we should go back to the beginning when we went mask optional in the beginning. If we, if we have to put that on the agenda for our next meeting as soon as possible.
As soon as possible, that should be put on our next, or have a meeting, I know we can't, but have another meeting so we can have that put on the agenda as soon as possible. My other question is, due to the shortage on everybody and everywhere, I'd like if Patty could, Danicola could address maybe getting the school busing into a union, bringing a union in for our busing to try increase our standard of living for the bus drivers who are working for just a little bit and our custodians a little bit above minimum wage and Walmart prices. I think we should actually go down that road for actually looking at union, bringing in the union for these people. I'd like to have that put on the agenda, too.
If I may, if I may, we have, our bus drivers are subcontracted, so we don't control the compensation or wages that are paid by Quigley Bus Service. That is, that's solely up to Quigley Bus Service, so we would have no authority to mandate
So you're saying it's not possible to bring the union in?
That's correct. They're not our employees.
I was under the impression that the school paid Quigley, and Quigley paid bus drivers.
We pay Quigley an annual sum of money based upon the trips, but the employees of their organization, they're an independent contractor, they're their own separate entity, and only the employees of Quigley Bus Service can act to unionize. We don't have that legal power at all. They are not our employees, and they haven't been our employees for decades.
Okay, but then there is, we can, well, the, as far as the bus drivers say, they can go together and actually get the union in there?
The independent, the, the employees do have the right to organize, and they're under a different set of laws than the school district, but they have the right to organize under the National Labor Relations Act with Quigley Bus Service.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Saltanic.
Does that answer your question? Okay, thank you, Mr. Updegrove. Ms. Hogan?
Thank you, Mr. Birvey. So I do have a comment, but I also had a question for, I don't know who it's for. So as to your question about compensating our bus drivers higher, we could direct Quigley to do that or no? That's part of the, like, we already have that contract, and it is what it is.
That is, that is a negotiated contract with Quigley. It is up to Quigley Bus Service as to what it pays its employee under the circumstances, and there is a doctrine under the law known as a joint employer doctrine that raises all kinds of IRS and other issues. It would be clearly inappropriate for us to do that. Now, we can, as part of our contractual negotiations, make certain stipulations in future contracts regarding the number of available bus drivers and the like, which I'm sure is driving part of this discussion, but right now, we have the contract that has been negotiating.
Okay, I appreciate the clarification. Thank you. All right, so just moving on to my comment. So I, I have heard a lot about masking, and people keep using the word fear. I don't look at these masks as instruments of fear or symbols of fear. I look at them as symbols of sacrifice. My grandfather, who I spoke about last week, you know, a World War II veteran, and I would ask the community to please be quiet while I speak, he taught me, he lived with me, and he taught me when I was young that it was my job to always stand on a public bus or in a public space for older people or with young women with children, or, he taught me that respect and sacrifice are part of being an American, and that it was my duty as an American to sacrifice for my fellow Americans during certain times, like that generation did during World War II. So again, I see this as, as a sacrifice. We are working to keep each other healthy. We are working to keep older people, vulnerable people in our communities healthy, and I think that the lesson that we're teaching our children is that sacrifice is an honorable thing, that it's a necessary thing, and that it's a patriotic thing. I also just wanted to comment that we are approaching the threshold of 800,000 Americans dead from COVID, and that is a large, large number. That's more, Mr. D, please, that's more than died in the Vietnam War, World War I and World War II combined, so it is a very, very large number. Also, I just wanted to wish all of my colleagues and all of everyone in the public, our students, a happy holiday and Merry Christmas. And I did want to mention one more thing. So I have a son who is a freshman this year, and he came home and told me about Wish Week, right? And I said to him, there's no way that's true, because when I was a freshman, someone tried to sell me a pass to the pool, like, on the roof of the school, which didn't exist. And it turns out that it is true, and that's really awesome. So thank you, guys. Appreciate it as always. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Panarello?
So I just want to say that me and Ms. Torsh spoke for about an hour and 15 minutes today, and we spoke about the masks, and we spoke about the Health and Safety Plan, and I think over the next few weeks, we need to make drastic changes to the Health and Safety Plan, and we discussed some of the things that we could change, and I think at the end of that, everybody would be happy. But the motion that you made earlier, just the way it's written up right now, it's written up in such a way that the mask wouldn't come off, even if we voted on it today. So we have to address that, like, sooner rather than later and get past that. And with that being said, I would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and everything moving forward. All right?
Okay, Mr. Hemingway?
I don't have much of a comment to accept. Just thanks for everyone coming out, and wish everyone a safe holiday. I do look forward to our discussion on the 11th to give the administration the opportunity to, to reevaluate, make the recommendation to the board. I'm excited about this new board, that we can have some good conversation, loose conversation during the next, next meeting, and we can come up with some real solutions that will keep our kids in school, keep everybody safe, and continue to push forward. So again, thank everybody.
Okay, with that, I'm sorry, Mr. Zawada?
No problem, Mr. Burofy. Just real quick, wanted to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and we will get this handled next, next year.
I think I've spoken enough for tonight. I'm not going to have any further comments.
Motion to adjourn? I have a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second to the motion?
Hogan seconds.
Is it adjourned?